It's still little.
I see that.
I'll be reading it off the board.
It's littler.
I see that.
Okay, hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall. I am the Lower Paxton Township Manager. And in typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's meeting, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. So this is a workshop session of the Board of Supervisors. It is a meeting here during which, as the Board annually does, we'll hear presentations on a number of Dauphin County Local Share Municipal Grant applications for which the Board must go ahead, rank, and provide then to each of the applicants, letters of support that they would go ahead and then include within their submission to the county. So we have a number of those application presentations on the agenda this evening. Following these presentations, the Board will take action on a few items of new business to include a global employment settlement agreement, action on Resolution 22-11, and then action on Resolution 22, I'm sorry, 2023-12, both of which pertain to grant requests of the township to the county related to a couple of infrastructure safety improvement projects that we have going on as well. All of that being said, members of the Board are seated and prepared to conduct business. I was reminded, though, however, to try to make a plug. We do have updated information on the new Penn Waste Contract, which can be found right on the homepage. There is a link directly from the homepage to the new contract page that we have set up. So that has been updated just as of earlier this evening. So if you want to take a look at that, that is updated and on the website, right on the homepage. So with all that said, members of the Board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gottschall. We'll call this meeting of the Lower Paxton Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise, and Supervisor Lindsay will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no minutes to approve. The Board of Supervisors did meet in executive session prior to this meeting, and the time is now set aside for public comment. Public comment is for an item not on the agenda. If you were here to discuss an item on the agenda, we will have public comment on that item at that time. So would anybody like to address the Board on an item not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move immediately then to presentations on the 2023-2024 Dauphin County Local Share Municipal Grant Program. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We'll start with Cafe Fresco. Is there somebody here representing? If you could, please come to the podium and give us your name and address.
My home address or business address?
Uh.
Home address.
Home address. And pull the microphone a little closer to you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, there we go, good.
So my name's Megan Alea. I live at 4212 Prosperous Drive, Harrisburg, PA 17112. I'm here to request township sponsorship for the local share gambling grant. I own Cafe Fresco on Paxton Street. We will be there next year 20 years. With the highway project, I was a little nervous a couple of years ago, but now my lease was up and I went to renew it and they would not renew my lease. They raised the rent and they said I can go monthly. They'll give me 60 to 90 days to me, for me to leave or me to tell them I have to leave. So everything on the left of me, Toyota, Starbucks, all that is gone. The new Paxton Street exit is right next to me. Nito Burrito and our shopping center just got told five weeks ago that they are taking their building. The new highway is going across our parking lot. So with that being said, I am 54 and I'm like, what do I do? Do I relocate? Do I close shop? So I discussed it with my children. They're like, definitely relocate to Linglestown Road. So that is why I'm here. So yeah, so I just signed the lease. They're starting construction in July and I'll be moving to Lower Paxton Township. So, um, oh yeah, sorry. So I'm here, I'm requesting money towards my build out. Also, I have a great relationship with Dauphin County Work Release. Since 2011, I have employed 90 people from Work Release. So I continue to do that to help them, you know, start over again. And, sorry, did I nerd at this before?
No, that's okay.
Yeah.
So yeah, so basically.
We don't bite, so.
But yeah, so that's why I'm here, for sponsorship. Any questions?
And you'll be located where in Linglestown Road?
Blue Ridge.
Blue Ridge?
Yes, Blue Ridge, yeah.
I just have a question. There was no amount that you were asking for. Do you know what amount you'll be asking for, for the grant?
When I went to meet with them, I think she said it was 70. I didn't, we didn't put anything. So I think that was the max you would get was 70. So whatever I get would help.
Okay.
I'm using 300,000 of my own money and my build out alone, no equipment or nothing, is 350. So yeah.
Just a curiosity question. Of the 90 people that were on Work Release, over what period of time?
Since 2011.
And of those 90 people, how many remain as an employee?
You know, they, they come with me when they're in there and then when they come out, they normally stay with me for quite a bit and then they move on. So yeah, so right now I have a kid that was in there. He is out now and he's still with me. Yep, so they stay like a year or two. Some of them get back in trouble, which is very common, and then they come back and work for me yet again. But, um, yeah.
It's kind of like an OJT program.
And you want to talk about the Work Release thing, since that came up? Just so that if there's anybody out there that has questions about that, oh, you're, you know, bringing people, Work Release, you know, they're, they're really monitored very closely.
Correct.
By their parole, probation parole officers. So, yeah.
Yeah.
I know that because I used to oversee the medical Work Release side of the Work Release program. So, and we used to send a lot of guys over to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they always enjoyed working there. And you kept me fed through my undergrad and through my master's degree at Penn State. So I, I, I'm glad that you're not closing the doors.
Yeah, you know, I, it just, you know, being this old, I didn't have it. I'm like, what do I do? Like, my landlord's really not giving me, it's kind of like, I feel like they don't really know. So for them to renew my lease, they would have to buy me out. So I think that's, you know, basically what's happening. But, you know, if they take Nino, if you're familiar with the shopping center, if they're taking Nino Burrito, that is like cutting right across the back end of our parking lot. And I don't know if you saw that new sign they put up? There's a new billboard sign. It's actually on our parking lot at the shopping center. So it looks like, it's like, you know, if they just need to take a little bit more, that whole side of my shopping center is done.
What's the start? When you start your build out, when are you gonna, when do you anticipate starting that?
So no, actually, I believe they're finishing drawings now. They have to be submitted for approval. And we're look, I, I think we're still on schedule for July, sometime in July.
Do you have an opening date then approximately?
Uh, they said, well, when we met, they said, don't, because I have to give 90 days to my landlord. They're like, wait till they start construction and then like you'll probably be out by the end of September and then you're open early October.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you for choosing Lower Paxton Township to bring your business.
I'm super excited. I know I'll do really well. There's nothing like Cafe Fresco out there. And like I said, it says a lot for a mom and pop shop to be open 20 years, especially during COVID. I mean, I got destroyed at COVID because my whole clientele were work people that now work remote. And I was able to keep all my employees, stay open and, you know, I'm very proud of, you know, Cafe Fresco.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Catholic Charities Dioceses of Harrisburg.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Meehan. My address is 126 Park Place West, Shippensburg, Pennsylvania. And I work for Catholic Charities of the Diocese of Harrisburg. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We are seeking your sponsorship for our Dauphin County Local Share Municipal Grant application to support security upgrades at our St. Samuel's Center. The St. Samuel's Center is located at 120 Willow Road in Harrisburg. It is the former Colonial Pines Retirement Facility, if you're familiar with what that building was. We have been at the St. Samuel's Center since 2012. It is the home of three of our residential programs. Those programs being Evergreen House, which is a drug and alcohol rehab facility for women, Lord's House Maternity Home, which is a residential program for women who have, for pregnant women who have nowhere else to go, and the Interface Shelter for Homeless Families, which is obviously a homeless facility. It's very unique in that we keep a homeless family together during that emergency time. Unlike other facilities that are just for men or just for women, our homeless shelter caters strictly to families and we keep that family intact during that emergency crisis. Again, we have been there since 2012 and our grant application is for security upgrades. There was a security vulnerability assessment that was conducted recently and there were various concerns that were identified during that assessment. Some of those concerns include a lack of a closed circuit television system, a lack of a key control system, a non-functioning air phone, and as well as exterior landscaping trees that basically need to come down. If you were to look at our facility, there's about 30-plus trees that are around the perimeter of the building and it's a, it's a security hazard. If you talk about the nature of our programs there, again, it's a drug and alcohol rehab facility, it's a maternity home and it's a homeless shelter. Many of our clients come from abusive situations and it was determined that if somebody has a PFA, you know, protection from abuse, we are not adequately equipped to house somebody that has a PFA. It's a safety risk to both our clients and as well as our staff who work in the building. So we have identified various capital improvements that need to take place. Again, a new air phone system, new cameras, a new access control key fob system and tree removal. The total cost is a little over $102,000. And we have identified some support already from the Klein Foundation. We anticipate more support from the McCormick Family Foundation and we are optimistic about our Dauphin County Local Share application. Our application with the local share is $57,652, which is a little over half of the $102,000 for our overall project. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have and I thank you for your consideration of our request.
Questions?
I just have a quick question. Looking at your numbers for the, the region, by far the services that you most commonly offer are immigration and refugee services. Can you explain what those are?
Immigration Refugee Services, it's one of the many, we have about 20 to 25 programs under the Catholic Charities umbrella. Immigration and Refugee Services, we work with the United States Council of Catholic Bishops. There's about 190 Catholic Charities agencies across the country, in which Harrisburg is one. And what we do with our Immigration Refugee Services, they're all legal entrance into the country. It's a very common misconception that we are catering to illegal immigrants and I can assure you that's not the case. All of our clients, again, are legal entrance. They come through the State Department. They get resettled to different parts of the country, including Harrisburg. We help them with job training, finding housing, any educational needs they might have, English as a second language, any educational, you know, getting kids into schools, things of that nature. But again, I do want to stress, they are all legal entrance to the country. And many people, they hear immigration. I know it's a hot button topic with a lot of people.
Yeah, it is, it's, it's a hot button and it's also a legitimate concern.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm not arguing with that either.
Do the, the refugees, I think most of the people crossing the border, if you're seeking asylum, if you're declaring refugee status, I think technically they're all considered legal at some level because they're refugee status. So what, what does legal mean? Does it mean that you're on the record somewhere?
Well, in our case, I can tell you, the clients that we serve, they have come, again, through, through the State Department. They have been vetted, for lack of a better term. There's nobody that we have served, you've seen on the news, the buses and the planes going to different sanctuary cities. That's not the case with the clients that we're serving here in Harrisburg. I can't speak to what's going on in different parts of the country, but I can assure you that all our clients have been legally vetted to be.
Okay. Okay.
I hope that helps. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you again, appreciate it.
Next, Coons Memorial Swim Club.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
My name is George Conko. My address is 6530 Parkway East, Harrisburg, PA 17112. Coons Pool received a grant last year for replacing our diving board and we were like $65,000. We were awarded a grant of $30,000. Towards the end of last year, we ended up with a $14,000 water bill. And it's a long story. Then we, we spent about $15,000 locating leaks and having them repaired. And this spring, we kept our fingers crossed and I can tell you the pool is holding water better than it ever has. We actually had the gaming grant reallocated. So the $30,000 went towards the water bill and the repairs. Now, we did, we only got about 17,000 of the 30. We were just thankful for that. Unfortunately, we had enough that we could afford making these repairs with the help from the county. The county also told us to reapply for the diving board project again this year, which is why I'm here. One of the reasons, another reason we had to eliminate the diving board project was Coons Pool is going to put $11,000 of our own money towards the diving board. County likes it when we have some, put in some money of our own. So right now, we're asking for 55,000, but I'm sure we'll be putting in money towards that. Anybody have any questions?
So the pool, the diving board works, but someone determined that it's?
There you can see the existing diving board. We're assuming it was put in in 1960. The actual board itself, nobody knows the exact age of that diving board, which is kind of scary, really. So we worked with Boyer Pools. When we, when we redid our baby pool, they came in, they redid all the plumbing. I mean, the baby pool's been completely reconditioned. I had them get in the dive well and measure our dive well so that they would determine exactly what's wrong with the diving board. Because I noticed when, if you jump off the diving board and you're a big guy and you really spring, when you start coming up, you can actually touch the face of the dive well coming down from the pool, which you're not supposed to do that. So Boyer Pools, their conclusion was that the diving board is too long, it's too high, and it's actually too close to the edge. You really can't, I don't think you can see it in the other picture. Yeah, it's too close to the far side of the pool. Fortunately, I'm assuming we're grandfathered in. On the original grant last year, we were going to remove that concrete box that the pool's diving board's sitting on. And of course, we'd have to put a new footer in for the new board and we were going to replace a lot of the concrete at the end. You can see the concrete over there on the right side of the picture is pretty well messed up. And we were going to replace all of that and that was going to be over 65,000. But I decided that we can live with that concrete and hopefully we can live with that concrete block. Maybe the kids can sit on it or something to try and save some money. Any other questions? I will say the pool, this year is one of the best years we've had for opening, having water quality. The pools have actually been too full at times because they're, they're holding water beautifully. And we do, are quite successful when it comes to memberships and earning money. When we had our big sale at Hornings, I think last year we sold 17 family memberships. This year, we sold 41.
Oh, wow.
Yes. Well, it was two years, last year or two years ago, we had to start limiting walk-ins. It was getting too crowded. So Coons Pool, along with all the other township parks, are doing great. Any other questions?
Good job.
Now, if we would just warm up a little bit more.
Hey, weird pool this afternoon.
How's the water?
Cold.
Cold.
Always cold.
Very cold. Thank you, sir. Okay, next, the Panther Ram Foundation.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Pam Jones. I live at 2811 Pin Oak Drive, 17112. And I am the Director of the NutriPacks Program. We operate within the Central Dauphin School District, where over 55% of the student population is now identified as low income. That was defined in 2023 as a family of four earning less than 45,000 of taxable income. Our primary focus is to supply nutritious food for the weekends and the long school breaks for families of food insecure students within the district. Proper nutrition is very important for our community and hungry children have difficulty learning. We operate as a backpack program during the school year, supplying nutritious meals and snacks for the weekends. Each child receives a food bag with two breakfasts, two lunches, snacks and two dinners, plus one half gallon of milk. At our main distribution site at CD Middle School, we have additional refrigeration and storage, which will enable us to offer eggs, fresh fruit and produce when available. We saw an overwhelming increase in need in the 2022-23 school year as the pandemic support ended and inflation pressure grew. Our weekly packs have now increased to an average of 600 food bags. Enrollment continues to creep up during the school year and this was opposite of all previous years. The demand for vegetarian packs has grown to 12% of our weekly packs and this is because of the increase in the immigrant population. NutriPacks is a fully volunteer organization. We have very low operational non-food cost. We operate under the Panther Ram Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3). NutriPacks is an ongoing program. We raise funds throughout the year and we adjust our purchasing to ensure that the program can continue year to year. As happened this year with the increased demand, we have eliminated frozen meat and chicken to trim our expenses. We are asking for funding of $50,000. Our community has spoken and we are listening. By improving the quality of life through nutritious food, we are having a positive effect on the health and the learning of our students and our local community. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Any questions? I think we're all pretty familiar with the program. Y'all are doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
No questions.
Okay, the Partnership for Hope.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dave Seaman. I'm privileged to lead the Partnership for Hope. I live at 264 Riverview Terrace in Dauphin, but most of our projects actually center here in Lower Paxton Township. We actually were incorporated and operate out of a local church here. We primarily help people who are in crisis and people who are struggling. A number of our programs and efforts really come alongside other organizations. Two of them you've actually heard from tonight, so the Interface Shelter and NutriPacks. So we provide volunteers, we provide additional resources. For instance, we have some volunteers who wanted to help homeless families. So instead of starting from scratch and reinventing the wheel, we met with the shelter and we met actually with Chris Meehan and some other folks from the Interface Shelter and said, what can we do to help? We were, you know, fortunate to come alongside them. And so while they can provide, you know, job training and job placement and some other resources while families are in their facility, many times those families return to housing and they don't have anything to cook with or they don't have anything to sleep with, asleep on. We, we were fortunate to establish relationships with donors, retailers, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, Amazon, Walmart. And as a result of just really supporting these other organizations, again, NutriPacks, we established a site for them in Middle Paxton Township, worked with a local church up there, provided the transportation to take the donated food up to those clients in that area. We deliver all of the, the items to the families that leave the Interface Shelter we had up until the pandemic. We've been fortunate to collect over $6 million, almost $6.5 million worth of stuff that would have gotten thrown away and are able to work with these other organizations to repurpose that stuff, furnish houses, we've helped ex offenders. And I understand this is not in this township, but adjacent. We've helped people who are returning to our communities from incarceration. So overall, we've helped about 20,000 people in our tenure of, of existence. We're looking to support our infrastructure. There's, obviously, there's a lot of stuff that gets managed and distributed. We're looking to purchase another vehicle. Our application is pretty straightforward. So it's, it's a request for $24,000 of gaming funds to support that distribution. Again, this is not just our organization, although we provide some direct support to clients. This is really to support our relationships with almost 100 other nonprofit organizations and ministries, both here in the township and across the region. Any questions?
What kind of vehicle are you looking for?
A box truck. We had purchased a step truck and that's used mostly to do a mobile ministry in the Dairy Street, 13th Street corridor. This one is going to be supplementing that, although we have a new partnership with Mission Central over in Mechanicsburg. They do, they provide like $17 million worth of basic needs every year. So we're actually going to be joining them. We have a potential of a new partnership with Amazon where we can distribute about a million dollars worth of, you know, basic needs, housewares, you know, food, the whole nine yards. And so this box truck would be both for purposes of bringing those goods from the Mechanicsburg area to a local distribution as well as, you know, to assist with the distribution there in the Allison Hill area.
So this would be a used box truck?
Yes, it will be a used box truck. Yeah, we, we don't have expensive taste.
That was because you need to triple that amount. That was because you need to triple that amount.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. And that takes us to the Linglestown Baseball Association.
Good evening. I'm Bob Chernikoff, Secretary of the Board of the Linglestown Baseball Association. My address is twenty-four ten Toff Tree Drive here in the township. This is the third year out of the last four we've been here. You've been very helpful. We're trying to fix Coons Park still. Three years ago, we did get enough in the way of a grant that we were able to pay for two fields to put new fencing up, which was very much needed. The township actually contributed and paid for the third field, so we don't have that need anymore. We're still trying to get dugouts. Last year, township was, this board approved it. The county only gave us ten thousand dollars. Doesn't even build one dugout, to be honest. The dugouts at Coons Park, in particular at the Teener Field, which is the one along Ball Phaser, were originally built in the nineteen fifties. They're falling down. We keep putting new beams up, we keep putting braces up. One of these days, we know that they're just going to come down. I don't like to be doom and gloom, but those of you who check the local media know that there was an accident in Harrisburg where a dugout did come down when a team tried to do it themselves. The reason this cost is so high, we're seeking a hundred twenty-five, we don't expect to get that much. But if we can get enough to start with two of the dugouts at the Teener Field, move on to what we call the Rookie Field, which is the field behind the Midget Field in the middle of the park, and then go to the Pony Field, at least it's a start. The reason for the cost being so high is because we have to conform to the township requirements, which is fine, we're willing to do that, but it requires that it be block and can't be wood, and we have to put a concrete pad and footers, et cetera, and that's costly. We've tried to do it internally, we just have no one that can do the work, to be honest. We will do the demolition ourselves. We'll do all the cleanup, we'll do the landscaping. That's roughly twenty thousand dollars of the cost. The last project with the fencing, we took the fencing down ourselves. We actually did it in a weekend. It was pretty remarkable. We had probably fifteen people out there. Not myself, I can't climb anymore. Feet on the ground. And it was really a good community project. We are trying to enhance Coons Park. As you know, we have probably close to four hundred kids playing ball, just in Linglestown Baseball, starting with five-year-olds all the way up to nineteen-year-olds. It is the largest recreational, youth recreational baseball association on the east shore. There's, we have more teams than anyone else, and we fund them primarily self-fund and through sponsorships. We don't, and I'll put a little plug in, we have a golf tournament the end of July, and that's for our scholarship fund, that we fund at least one, if not two, kids a year for a small scholarship, kids that have played with us for years. We would really appreciate your help again, and we hope the county has some more money so we can get this done this year. One of these days, I just know, some, some six-foot-three kid's going to lean on one of those beams and it's going to come down. I don't have that problem. I can't reach them. But it is a safety factor. It is something that we really think should be done. Plus, we're going to enhance the township park. That park is open to everyone. There are, on the Teener Field alone, which is the one by Ball Phaser, there are six teams currently from the township using that field. It's in use all the time. There are very few open days, beginning in April into the end of July, and we then play in the fall also. That said, we're hopeful, as I said, for the support of the township, and we look forward to getting this project done.
Absolutely. Very good. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Gutschall. Was any of this included in the master park plan for the dugouts? Were we in touch with the baseball or the softball association to see when we were doing the master park, if there was anything that they needed?
I can't specifically recall if they, yeah, I don't, I don't think they were.
We, we did make a pitch. We were at at least one, if not two, of the meetings about that, and we did ask.
The park plan, okay.
Yeah, Brad, I think we should have further discussion about this. Obviously, hopefully they're successful for the whole amount with the county grant, but in light of what happened in Harrisburg, this has really put safety of these structures on, you know, a front burner here. The gentleman's already expressed some concern about the adequacy of them. Between our, our parks money and, you know, maybe even A R P money that we haven't assigned yet, I, I think we need to find a way to get this done as quickly as possible before somebody gets hurt or killed. I mean, now that, now that we've seen what's happened, it really raises, I think, a red flag. So can, let's have some further discussion about what we can do to make this happen. We could also perhaps talk with some of our friends at the county as well. It seems to me like this needs to happen sooner rather than later.
Yeah, because that money, I think Loman doesn't get distributed till March?
Till March.
Yeah, am I right, Mr. Chernikoff?
They awarded the money last March?
Yeah.
The ten thousand that we got from last year?
Right.
I've yet to get that money. We still don't even have the contract from the county.
Oh, okay.
And I've asked for it.
So, I mean, that's what I'm looking at. Here we are, June, and, you know, do they go through this process?
Yeah, it's going to be at least the fall, if not later. It could be next spring.
Well, for this money?
For this money, yes.
Right, you won't get it till March.
Right.
Yeah, you will not, and like you said, you still haven't received from last year, but you will not, you know, you will not get the money till March, and here we are, June, and they're going to be playing fall ball out there also?
Definitely.
Right, yeah.
Are, are all this, are there some of those structures in worse shape than others?
The Teener Field is by far the worst.
Yeah, we need to take a look.
I think maybe we ought to have a very serious discussion here about getting that problem corrected like now. And I know it's hard for government to do anything like now, but, you know, yeah, I read, I read the horrific stories of what happened to that young man in Harrisburg, and my first thought was, how could something like that happen? Well, now I, now I hear.
I, I knew that kid since he was nine years old, when he started playing baseball, so.
Yeah, and Brad, why, if they did put a, I'm, I'm just asking, okay? If they did put a pitch in through the master park plan, why did we deny it? Do you know?
Ask that question again.
Okay, so if they were at, if they put a pitch in for the master park plan, that, hey, we need these dugouts, they are really, really bad, why did we deny them not, you know?
I mean, the township didn't deny anything. It was just part of the master planning process and looking at the parks globally, and a lot went into that plan, so.
Do we check those dugouts because they are on our property? Are those dugouts checked periodically by any of our staff or public works? I mean, because you're telling me they're really, they're really bad, you know, so that makes me.
The Teener Fields are. What we're looking for on the Rookie Field is really, we don't have a dugout. We have kids, seven and eight-year-old kids sitting out in the open. If we get a lightning storm, that's a problem.
Yeah, that's definitely a problem, but I think where we're more concerned is the ones that are.
The Teener Field is definitely structurally, it's safe, but we don't tear. The Pony Field, which is the other one on Ball Phaser, which is the, currently the nine and ten-year-old kids, that one is not quite as bad as the Teener, but it's, it's, that's probably since the sixties since it was done.
Wow.
I don't think our parks consultant addressed any of that.
I don't think, I didn't, I don't recall seeing any of that in the plan. Of course, the plan, we've, we've already had critical issues with some parts of the plan.
The, the, the plan, too, was not, was not ever intended to be a facilities, health or assessment of, of, of the health of particular components, so.
Yeah. We were just looking at what should be programmatically speaking at each park facility, not every, not every structure.
Correct.
Right.
But now this gentleman has brought an issue to our attention. Would this be something that perhaps we should have H R G go out and take a look at them, or somebody from our staff? I think we should inspect them, like, right away.
Please don't shut us down. We need to play ball games.
Watch that.
Don't shut us down. We need to play some ball games still.
Well, yeah, no, we won't shut you down.
Thank you.
But, but what I'm trying to get to is, you know, to wait until money's awarded next March until you get around to rebuilding them, you're looking at like a year and a half to two years, and I think that's too long of a period of time. Now, maybe the, the fields that don't have a structure, that's something that can, can wait because nobody's going to be harmed, but particularly the field where we have the two dugouts that are structurally of concern.
Yeah, improvements are one thing. Safety matters.
Safety is another, right, yeah.
And, and we do have, you know, A R P money that's unassigned, as it were. Not that we want to spend it, you know, too rapidly, but.
Would public works be able to do any of that work?
The work itself, I'm just not sure the scope of the project. I'll certainly have our, our staff take a look at that.
Okay.
Because I was just going to say, I mean, the only thing, and I, I don't at all deny or, or speak against the, the, you know, this project particularly. This is great. I, I think as far as the, the safety concern is, is well noted here. The only thing that I would caution the board on here is, is the fact that we do, I mean, we have dozens of requests from, from a variety of sporting associations, you know, from all of our parks, including ones that have safety components to them. I mean, we have a number of township-owned, you know, pavilions that, that are about to crumble.
Well, in which case, I think that we should make it a priority to do an inventory of those so that we know what they are. You know, if we have, if we have pavilions that may be unsafe, or potentially unsafe, or other structures that kids are using, or young adults, or adults are using, you know, not to add to the workload here, but we really should get an inventory of what poses a safety hazard, because we have set aside significant money for parks improvements. As you know, over five million dollars has been set aside for park improvements. So if something is a safety hazard, that would seem to me to put it at the top of the priority list. And I understand that you opened a Pandora's Box, but this gentleman is here before us at the moment with a specific need where a neighboring municipality has already had a tragedy occur. So being aware of it, I think we have to do something.
Well, and I think too, Loman, if we're aware there's other issues, safety issues in some of the parks, I think that needs to be looked at, too.
I agree.
You know, that's, yeah, I mean, that's, because we're renting, we're renting out these pavilions.
That's why I said we need to take an immediate inventory to find out, is there anything that is an immediate safety hazard, or something that we look at and say, okay, this will have obsolescence in a year, or two years, five years, so that we can have a systematic approach to fixing the most serious problems first, of which this appears at least the one field. So if we could address the one field where you have the current safety problem, and then proceed with the grant, hopefully it gets funded to build the ones on fields that don't have any. We'll, we'll get back to you on that.
I appreciate that. I'm available. Give my number.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd hate to see, I mean, after what happened in Harrisburg, if we replicate that.
That was a nice dugout.
Any other questions for the gentleman?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And Mr. Linglestown Fire Department?
Did we save the best till last?
Did we save the best till last?
I don't know about that, but at least we got a private audience, some of us, you know.
Yeah, you, you lost all the audience.
I know. If you don't mind, Mayor Gutschall, just can you get like the first page of pictures, please? I can walk through the narrative piece at that point then. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen on the board. Nick DeSanto, President of the Linglestown Fire Company. Thanks for the time tonight to hear us on our request for your support on the Dolphin County Local Share Municipal Gaming Grant. About a year and a half ago, I think I was here, we were talking about the land development approval for the Station Two. It's located at fifty-eight thirty-five Linglestown Road. This facility was built in part with donations from our community, as well as the fundraising from the fire company. And after three years of not applying for a gaming grant, we were coming back to look at debt reduction to help pay off for this facility. This facility is a very unique facility, and not only in our municipality, but also the region. It is the only municipal and privately owned forestry building in the entire area, especially the county. It houses resources that deploy to Dolphin, Skuggal, Northumberland, Perry, Adams, Cumberland, and Lakester County. So it's a very far-reaching facility. All the assets that are in there are also privately owned by the fire company and provide these necessary supports to not only Lower Paxton, but the neighboring municipalities that I already mentioned. The, also in this facility, we were able to move our antique fire apparatus, as well as the historical wards and pictures of the history of Linglestown and the fire company. These are now on display so that the public can see them even without access to the facility. So it gives a little bit of a historical context to where we are, where we were, where we are, and where we're trying to go. Reason for this project and the support request, it is a larger request that we are going to be seeking from the county over the seventy thousand that's there. You guys remember from three years ago when we took on the air unit project that was supported from the county as a whole, and there was a bigger support, and we were able to pay off that entire project with their assistance. We are looking for a full debt reduction on this facility. That's what our request is going to be to the county, and we have our pre-application meeting scheduled for Thursday with them to discuss that in greater detail. The reason that that is important, as everybody on the board and people in the public, in the fire service are aware of, there is a lot of discussion of where we are moving forward into the future, and we are looking to put ourselves into a financial, financial position that we are able to support whatever those decisions are moving forward for the best of the community in our township. So with that, I'll answer any questions that the board has on our request, and we look for your support.
Nick, did you have a ribbon cutting or grand opening or anything like that?
We were going to do it, then it got a little busy in the wildfire season for us, and we decided not to trump that on Memorial Day, although there were a lot of people there for Memorial Day. We opened the facility up for the public and everybody to see it, but we are going to do a ribbon cutting open house in October at this point to tie that into fire prevention season as well. So try to let us settle in a little bit. We opened the doors and it was getting used pretty quickly, so.
How many calls do you do?
That's a, when you break down the details, it's a little complex, but we're, we're running right now about seventy-five to eighty, seventy-five or eighty calls right now, year to date, out of that station. So year over year, we've been seeing about a twenty to thirty percent increase in calls for those services that are in that facility.
What's your assessment of the current situation relative to the fact that we haven't had much rain? I know a number of counties and municipalities have done a burn ban. Is there a?
For fireworks.
Or a firework ban or whatever. Is there a concern from the fire community in Lower Paxton at the moment?
Presently at the moment, no. We're going to continue to monitor that as the weeks tick by, though, and get a little closer. One of the things that we are very blessed with here is we do have a lot of support from neighboring agencies that also have, not in kind, but similar apparatus capabilities that we can provide. So so long as it's not, and I want to say a red status, we would probably continue with our plans, but that's something that we're going to have to address in the coming weeks because played by here. I mean, the rain yesterday was great. It's the kind of rain we need, but we need a little bit more of that, too, to kind of continue into the, into the future here. But I think there's a lot of weather, weather conditions in, in general, we got to watch with that, just not just temperature and drought.
Yeah, I was surprised, Nick, that Dolphin County didn't do a burn ban, because I know other neighboring counties have, you know, have done it. Yeah.
York, Lebanon, probably Lancaster. Do we ever, do we talk about that normally locally, or is that, I know counties do county-wide bans, but we have the authority to do a municipal? Not that I'm looking for it, but is this something that we need to be thinking?
Well, my current understanding of the burn ordinance is, it's pretty much tied down pretty well in Lower Paxton. There's very few exceptions to why you can. I'm not saying there are.
That's true. That's true.
Have it, but there is a.
Firework season getting ready to start, you know.
Yeah, that makes you a little nervous with July fourth coming, you know, if we don't get, you know, a lot more rain.
I think the big push will be, a lot of that might be some marketing tools and social media pushes. People do generally help self-police some of that stuff, and, but yes, it's something we're watching over the next couple of weeks as the weather patterns have been fluctuating.
It's a nice building.
Yes.
Very nice.
Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. And I believe that concludes our listing of presentations for the municipal share program. Board members, you all have your grid there to make your assignments on that. We will now take us to new business, and we need to take action on a global settlement agreement and general release with a former township employee. Not much could be.
Much could be said. Mr. Gottschall, anything you wish to add?
Nothing particularly, sir. The board, you know, as, as you all are aware, the board does this from time to time, and this is simply to facilitate a separation of employment of an individual by the township. And this document has been prepared and reviewed by the solicitors and township staff and is ready for your approval this evening.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve a global settlement agreement and general release with a former township employee.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. We need to take action on Resolution 2023-11, authorizing the filing of a Dolphin County Transportation Infrastructure Safety Improvement Program grant request for the Lincoln Street Allentown Boulevard project. Mr. Gottschall?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, both Resolution 2023-11 and 2023-12, both pertain to grant submissions that we have before, or will have, once the board approves this, this evening, will have before the Dolphin County Transportation Infrastructure Safety Improvement Program, or TIP for short. Both of these resolutions are coming out of the same program, obviously. The, the township has made it pretty clear to the town, or to the county, that the first resolution, this Lincoln Street and Allentown Boulevard intersection safety improvement project, this is the one that the township really seeks to have funded, but there is a bit of a question within the application relative to whether or not it is eligible to be funded by the county. So we are going ahead and submitting both resolutions for two separate projects to kind of hedge our bets against that question. And so the second resolution, 2023-12, pertains to the Crumbs Mill Bridge Safety Improvement Project as well. So both of these programs are ready to roll, if you will, with regard to the, to the applications and engineering and things, but like I said, we're really hoping for the first one to be funded, but the second one is a, is a hedge.
Okay. Questions?
Can we make one resolution for both requests for funding?
They're written up as two separate ones.
Yeah, there'll be two separate applications to the county, so we'll need two, two independent resolutions.
Okay, can we have a motion on Resolution 2023-11?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve action on Resolution 2023-11, authorizing the filing of a Dolphin County Transportation Infrastructure Safety Improvement Program grant request for the Lincoln Street Allentown Boulevard project.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then we need to take action on Resolution 2023-12. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2023-12, authorizing the filing of a Dolphin County Transportation Infrastructure Safety Improvement Program grant request for the Crumbs Mill Bridge project.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
No further business on the agenda. Does the board or manager have any additional announcements?
Can I just announce about the bag tags?
Yes.
So if you are holding bag tags and you want reimbursed by the township, they must be submitted to the township by the end of June.
These would be trash bags.
Trash bags, your trash bag tags, yeah.
Any additional announcements or comments, board members? Our next board meeting is scheduled for one week from tonight, Tuesday. It will be June 20th already, at 7:00 PM in this room. It will be a business meeting. There being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.